Some, somebody keep on eating me. For me in hell. I can hear. You can hear Mikey good. Hit your mute though on your computer so we can't hear you.
Jamie, any recommendations?
I think we've got that fixed.
So we're good now?
Test, test, test.
We'll try and get the feedback and then we'll get started. We're all good? All right, we'll bring the meeting to order. Guess we'll have a reading of the...
Give it a roll call?
Okay, roll call.
Roll call, Bedden?
Here.
Brooks? Cheatham?
Here.
Art?
Here.
Haynes?
Here.
Hodge? Cat Hodge?
She's present, I think she left the room for a moment.
Matur?
Here.
McDonald?
Here.
Thomas? Vickers?
Present.
Vogel?
Present.
Have a quorum.
Thank you. So we have a motion for the reading of the minutes?
Approve a motion of the minutes here, Chairman?
Your motion to approve the November 18th minutes?
Correct. So I guess we'll have a roll call vote after the motion. Yeah, so moved.
Bedden?
Yes.
Brooks? Cheatham?
Yes.
Art?
Yes.
Haynes?
Yes.
Hodge?
Approval of the minutes?
Matur?
Yes.
McDonald?
Yes.
Thomas? Vickers?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Minnesota approved unanimously with two absent.
Guess we'll have a reading of the agenda.
Okay. Following is the consent agenda, Little Rock Planning Commission meeting of December 9th, 2021. You have two items on consent withdrawal, item number nine, file number Z7786C, Dennis Properties Revised Long Form PCD, 11421 Stagecoach Road. Staff has determined that the proposed replant of this property does not increase the intensity of the previously approved PCD and that can be handled at staff level or administratively. Therefore, no revised PCD will be required and staff recommends this application be withdrawn. Item 12, Z9634 Greenwich Properties, PDR, 3717 West Capital Avenue. The applicant submitted a letter to staff requesting this application be withdrawn. Staff supports that request. Next, you have three items on consent deferral. Item 10, file number Z7965A, Hayes Properties Enterprises, PCD, 1417 South Park Street. The applicant submitted a letter to staff requesting this application be deferred to the February 10th, 2022 agenda. Staff supports that request. Item 13, Z9640 PB General Holdings, PDC, 1105 Fair Park Boulevard. The applicant failed to send the required notifications to surrounding property owners. Therefore, staff recommends this application be deferred to the January 13th, 2022 agenda. Item 14, Z9642 Splash Car Wash, PDC, 18021 Cantrell Road. The applicant submitted a letter to staff requesting this application be deferred to the January 13th, 2022 agenda. Staff supports that request. Next are the items on consent approval. Item A, file number Z9624 Washington Manufactured Home Conditional Use Permit, 17220 Crystal Valley Road. Staff recommends approval of the requested CUP to allow multi-sectional manufactured home at 17220 Crystal Valley Road subject to the following conditions: Compliance with the comments and conditions noted in paragraph D, paragraphs D and E and the staff analysis of the agenda staff report and compliance with the manufactured home minimum siding standards as found in section 36254D5 of the code. Item number one, S1900A Pleasant Run Subdivision Revised Preliminary Platte, Northeast Corner of Walnut Grove Road and Burlingame Road. Staff recommends approval of the revised preliminary platte subject to compliance with the following conditions: Compliance with the comments and conditions outlined in paragraphs D and E and the staff analysis of the agenda staff report and a construction permit for the installation of septic systems on all lots must be obtained from the Arkansas Department of Health prior to completion of a final platte for this subdivision. Item number two, G23481 Jack Stevens Drive Right-of-Way Abandonment, south of Plateau Street to West 6th Street. Staff recommends approval of the requested right-of-way abandonment subject to the following conditions: Compliance with the comments and conditions outlined in paragraph E of the staff analysis of the agenda staff report and the entire area of abandonment must be retained as a utility and drainage adjustment. We're moving item three to the regular agenda. So the next item on consent approval is item four, Z9639 Christian Manufactured Homes Conditional Use Permit, 7815 Barrett Road. Staff recommends approval of the requested CUP to allow for the placement of two double-wide manufactured homes, one per lot, subject to the following conditions: Compliance with the comments and conditions noted in paragraph E and the staff analysis of the agenda staff report, compliance with the manufactured home minimum siding standards as found in section 36254D5 of the code and a replat subdividing the property into two lots must be completed prior to locating the manufactured homes on the property. Item number five, LU20211001, a land use plan amendment from a lot industrial to commercial, 7900 Colonel Glenn Road. Staff believes the proposed land use plan amendment is appropriate. Item 5.1, Z9632, a rezoning from I-7900 Colonel Glenn Road. Staff recommends approval of the requested C3 rezoning. Item number six, Z9636, a rezoning from R2 to C3, 11921 Canis Road. Staff recommends approval of the requested C3 rezoning. Item seven, Z9637, a rezoning from R2 to I2 and OS, 8700 Block of Interstate 30 on the south side. Staff recommends approval of the requested I2 and OS rezoning. Item number eight, Z4807T, The Vista PRD, southwest corner of Rawling Road and Champaign Old Drive. Staff recommends approval of the requested PCD zoning to allow an age-restricted multifamily development subject to compliance with comments and conditions outlined in paragraphs D, E, and F and the staff analysis of the agenda staff report. And the final item on consent approval is item 11, Z8278B, The District at Midtown Revised Long Form PCD for Lot 15, 500 South University Avenue. Staff recommends approval of the revised PCD subject to compliance with the comments and conditions outlined in paragraph E and the staff analysis of the agenda staff report. That concludes the consent agenda.
Thank you. May we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move that we approve the consent agenda, including all staff comments and conditions, with the caveat that item three, Z9638, be moved to the regular agenda.
Thank you, may we have a roll call vote?
Bedden?
Yes.
Brooks? Cheatham?
Yes.
Art?
Yes.
Haynes?
Yes.
Hodge? Matur?
Yes.
McDonald?
Yes.
Thomas? Vickers?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Consent agenda passes. All present, two absent.
Thank you. With that said, anyone who's in the room who had an item on the consent agenda, it is passed and there is no reason unless you want to stay around and listen to the remainder of the items on the agenda. We have two items on the agenda. I think we'll start with item three. Is the applicant present for that agenda item?
Mr. Chair, would you like a staff presentation first?
Yes, we would, obviously.
Okay.
Thank you.
Item number three, Phillips Duplexes Conditional Use Permit, file number Z9638, located at 3200 3210 Malloy Street. The applicant is requesting a conditional use permit to allow for the construction of two duplex structures on two lots, which would be one per lot, at 3200 and 3210 Malloy Street. The property is currently undeveloped, mostly grass covered. The property is located at the southwest corner of Malloy Street and west 32nd Street. The property is comprised of two platted lots, lots five and six, blocks 204, John Barrow addition. Each lot contains approximately 6,555 square feet or 15 hundredths of an acre. The applicant proposes to construct one duplex structure on each of the two platted lots. Each duplex structure will be 2,348 square feet in area and two stories in height. They will be thermal insulated wood frame structures with vinyl siding, thermal glazed windows and hip roofs with asphalt shingles on reinforced concrete slabs. The duplex structure will be located 25 feet back from the front or east property line, five to 6.25 feet back from the side property lines and over 60 feet back from the rear or west property line. All proposed setbacks will conform with section 36255, which are the R3 zoning standards of the city's zoning ordinance. The building heights will not exceed 35 feet. The applicant is proposing eight paved parking spaces, four per duplex to be located within the rear yard area between the duplex structures and the west property line. One shared driveway from west 32nd street will serve as access to the parking area. 36502 requires a minimum of six parking spaces for the two duplex structures and the parking as proposed will be sufficient to serve both duplexes. To staff's knowledge, there are no outstanding issues associated with this application. Staff believes the proposed duplex structures located at 3200 and 3210 Malloy Street are appropriate for this property. The duplexes will represent only a minor increase in the original platted density for the property. The proposed duplex structures will not be out of character with the general area as other duplex structures are located throughout the John Barrow neighborhood. Staff believes the proposed duplexes will have no adverse impact on the subdivision or the surrounding uses and the applicant is requesting no variances with the proposed development. Also, you did receive a letter of support from the John Barrow Neighbor Association for this application. Staff does recommend approval of the requested CUP subject to compliance with the comments and conditions outlined in sections D, E, and F and the staff analysis of the agenda staff report.
Thank you. I think the applicants are at the podium, so... Mr. Phillips, you're familiar with this process. If you'd like to tell us about your project and then... You obviously know you have 20 minutes and the other side will have 20 minutes to comment about the item. And we'll leave it with you, sir.
Yes, my name is Stanley Phillips. I'm the general contractor. Most of you know me, I see there's been some new faces. And basically, these are townhouse, brand new. I have several developments in John Barrow, all very well managed. I use a management company to vet the tenants so they go through a stringent with getting the right people in there. And all my development, there's no, been no crime, there's been no arrests, no disturbances. And for people who are not familiar with John Barrow or don't know what be happening, there be a crime and there be killings, but none of it has anything to do with Philip Properties. I don't have any... People that know me and people that know the John Barrow Association, they would not recommend approval if there was trouble. And they do, they be all over it. And anytime there's been any issue, I've taken care of it. And those that know me on the board, they have been to John Barrow. And like I said, some new people here, but the ones that have been here have been to John Barrow and have seen my developments, know they clean, well-run, well-managed. And to give people affordable, brand-new housing, 1,200 square feet, three bedrooms, two baths, in Barrow, that, well, a lot of people see it as a real plus because Barrow has not had very much development and it's kind of run down. But we've given it a facelift and you'd be surprised when someone puts something nice up, neighbors clean up their properties and increase the property value. And those that know me know that I'm fully vested in John Barrow. And I'm gonna let whoever want to oppose have time. And I brought, I brought a couple of people here who have knowledge, who own land in John Barrow and also who rent for me, have been longtime tenants so that y'all will get an idea. Maybe we can settle some of the concerns of the ones who have opposed because the truth is, a lot of people fear change. So I brought some people who could maybe help with addressing those issues.
Would you like those people to speak or would you like to defer at this time to the opposition? Okay, thank you. We have four cards in opposition and I'll just read them off in order. Want to remind everybody, we have 20 minutes for comments. First was Antonio Fuentes. I hope I pronounced that somewhat correctly. Can you approach the podium if you'd like to speak against this item? Okay, that's fine. Can you please both tell us your names?
My name's Antonio Fuentes and I live in...
Eighty-nine, oh-seven.
West Torito.
I'm Savino Blanco and I live 3118 Malloy Street.
Oh, can I get a little closer, maybe?
Okay.
Okay, my name's Antonio and I live in West Torito. Eighty-nine, oh-seven, you know, West Torito. But I know, I'm single, but I got my nephew, he can...
Yes, and my name is Savino Blanco and I live at 3118 Malloy Street. And we're opposing because there's a duplex right next to our houses and there's been a lot of crime there and we just, I don't know... Yes, he said he got, he got pictures that there's trash everywhere and stuff like that going on, cars parked on the street. We can barely go through and stuff like that, like just bothering us. We can live in peace. Yeah, we've been having a lot of trouble with the duplexes. There've been a couple murders there and stuff and, I mean, we're just scared to the same thing will happen in those duplexes y'all trying to build. Like, we're just opposing to it. We're not okay with it. And that's all we gotta say.
Thank you for your comments. Appreciate y'all coming out and speaking.
Excuse me, I got a question for Mr. Savino and Mr. Antonio. Just real quick, just for the record, because I couldn't hear. Are these properties owned by Mr. Phillips? Are you stating that?
I don't know, but there's just some duplexes close to the property that y'all trying to build.
Okay.
And there's just be too many problems there. There's always police there, there's always people outside drinking. There's a lot of things going on.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. The next card that I have is Lena Gosvenor. Lena, Lena? Is L-E-N-A, Lena? G-O-S-V-E-N-O-R, here? She does not want to speak, is that what I've heard? Okay, that's fine. Jason Green?
I'm Jason Green. I reside at 8924 West 33rd Street, Little Rock. I have owned my property for 21 years. Of the duplexes that they are speaking of, they were built approximately about 2010. I lived there 10 years before they were even built. So I know how things were in that neighborhood before that was built and it was fairly quiet. Right after they built those, we did start having problems. At the time, I owned the property that Antonio now owns because he purchased it from us. Personally dealt with the owner of that property countless of times because there were, people would move in there, they would move out, throw their trash and stuff over on my property, which is on the side, or which, the property that I owned, I sold to him, is facing the duplexes on Ludwig. And it was just a constant battle with all that. And yesterday, or actually today, I take photographs of the street and the vehicles being on that... Being parked along that road to where you can't hardly pass and they're even parked in the grass. Even though that there's concrete parking on the other side of the buildings where they're supposed to be parking, they don't do what they're supposed to do. And there's not enforced. So obviously, if they're, if they're allowed to just do whatever they want because, and another thing too, it's a known fact whenever you have multiple people congregating in one dwelling, you're gonna have some issues because everybody is not gonna get along all the time. I've seen it. I have personally seen these murders that has happened from 2010 up until now. I wished I had the pictures, the memories that I have in my head of watching people stand, I'm standing on my front porch or in my backyard, watching people get... watching people get the crap blown out of them. One of them get four or five holes in his chest, and then one on the side of his head, and you can see this splatter come out the other side. It's not pretty. I pay my taxes. I bought my house. My house is paid for. I should be able to enjoy it, and not have to deal with all that kind of carnage. Another thing, my, my, my family members serve to protect this country. We shouldn't be dealing with a war like this amongst ourselves. So, need to give people some elbow room to live. And that's what my argument is here today. I like my elbow room. Don't be crowding me. Because it, it doesn't work. I understand people wanting to build duplexes and stuff like that to make them an income. That's all well and good. But do it in an area that is not already built up beyond its capacity. Because we're going to have, as, average, average, uh, home dwelling has at least two to four occupants, you know, a man and a woman, and allow them to have at least two kids. So, you know, you have eight units, times four, okay, that's 20, what, 20-something people? Okay, yeah, it's gonna be a little crowded over there. Uh, there's already a bunch of kids that, uh, that play basketball and stuff all up and down that road. Well, you're, you're fixing to really increase the traffic, and then you stand the chances of, uh, kids getting ran over. Because people, people already fly up and down them roads in there anyway. You're just, uh, adding more, adding more chances of that happening. Uh, I don't want to see anybody get hurt. I don't want to see anybody, any kids get run over. I don't even want to see any more people get killed, you know, get shot. Thank God that it, past few months, it has been fairly, starting to be a little bit quiet around there. But I want to keep it that way. And that's why I'm here speaking against this proposal today. Because we don't, even, even the gentleman that builds these things, they, they don't live in this area, they don't live in our neighborhood, it's not in their backyard. So they don't have to deal with it. They just have to worry about bringing that check in every month. They don't have to deal with the aftermath. But we do. And that's why I'm standing up, and I'm standing up for me and all my neighbors. So, that being said, I hope you've taken what I can, taken consideration of what I have personally witnessed, and this is 100% a fact. You can go back and look at the records on the police reports, and stuff has been called upon that, this particular area that I was talking about. We got this in front of us. We don't need it behind us and be boxed in with it, not having it. So, that being said, I hope you all, uh, take into consideration, and don't allow this to happen. Thank you.
Thank you. We have our final, um, card here for the opposition, Esmeralda Orsale? Did I say that somewhat correctly?
Mi nombre es Esmeralda, vivo en la 3200 Ludwig Street, y quiero decir que ya tengo suficientes problemas con los duplexes que están en la, en la Ludwig Street.
She said with the duplexes, they're already there? She's, she's been having a lot of, a lot of problems already?
Yo soy madre soltera y tengo a mi hija, vivo sola. Y usualmente en esta clase de condominios en los duplexes rentan hombres solos, varios hombres solos. Y esta clase de personas no tienen respeto por cruzar por mi propiedad. A medio de la noche van y se asoman por la ventana de mi casa, y yo vivo en constante miedo, y eso los tengo enfrente. No quiero pensar ahora con tener la misma problema en unos duplexes atrás.
The duplexes she's talking about, they're right in front of her house, and the people that live there, they're single men. And sometimes, uh, they be walking around her yard, looking inside her windows. And now, the ones y'all trying to build is behind, and she's not trying to have, like, she, she's gonna be scared, two duplexes, and a lot of people walking around and stuff. She's scared.
Diariamente tengo que recoger la basura que hay en la que los perros desparraman en la basura. Esto es diariamente, y no estoy exagerando, porque quiero vivir en una zona limpia. Así que yo me tengo que encargar de recoger la basura de los vecinos de los duplexes.
Yes, and she's saying that there's a lot of trash going on in front of her house from the same duplexes in front of her house, and she had to pick it up all the time, and, uh, she's tired of it, to deal with it. Yeah, she's just trying to clean up and have her house cleaned and everything, but there's always trash going on in, in front of her house.
Aunque hablo con la manager, management, la...
Manager.
Sí, aunque hablo con ellos, no me hacen caso. Ah, las personas que viven ahí usualmente siempre están alcoholizados y fumando marihuana. Entonces, a nadie le puedes dar la queja, ni siquiera la policía, porque es John Barrow. La policía nunca llega a John Barrow.
She says she talked to the manager of the duplexes, and they haven't done nothing. There's always people drinking outside, smoking marijuana. Uh, she called the police a couple times, and nobody does nothing. And she's tired of having to deal with people...
Porque es John Barrow.
Always making a mess and stuff. That's all.
And I'm sorry to say this, but I'm not agree with this. Because it's John Barrow. We have enough. We have enough in John Barrow. So we don't need more duplexes in John Barrow. Especially, I have enough. And I'm afraid all the time, every single night. I have to watch around. I want to say more, but that's all my English that I have.
Thank you, you did well. Mr. Phillips, would you like to respond to the opposition?
I have a question for Mr. Phillips.
I'd like, um, I'd like for my two people to speak, and then I'll have a short closing.
Okay, and then we might have some questions for you after they speak.
Okay.
Okay. So there's two people present to support this item. Franklin? Thank you. Sorry, I couldn't read the first name, I apologize.
My name is Denise Franklin. Um, I live in the John Barrow area. I have, ooh, several properties there in the area. And I acknowledge all the concerns that the people opposing the project has stated as far as, uh, traffic, as far as parking, as far as people walking around. And one young man was talking about some murders on Malloy. I'm not, uh, sure of the duplexes that they're referring to, but obviously they're not referring to Mr. Phillips' properties. And as far as people walking around, I think that's not illegal. As far as being trashy, I mean, you just have to get with your neighbors and encourage them to keep the area clean, which is, we can't say that that's a reason to prevent, uh, improvements in the area. And as far as space goes, I mean, there are vacant lots, so there's obviously enough space for everybody, because there's still vacant lots, you know, within the area. And as far as the parking go, as Mr. Phillips said, the duplexes that he's built all around and throughout the John Barrow area all have sufficient parking, so there would be no reason for the streets to be crowded or anything else related to the duplexes, because they have more than sufficient parking. And as far as the capacity of the people living in the, um, apartments, as far as people being restricted to having a husband and a wife, or one or two kids, I mean, these are three-bedroom, two-bath homes, and we got, uh, you know, individual homes that, you know, may not even be as large as 1,200 square feet that may be more than three or five people living in, so that shouldn't be an issue. So, I mean, as far as the murders, I mean, the news come on every day in the Little Rock area uh, three times a day, and it repeats some of the same things over and over, except for updates. And I've not heard of any recent murders on Malloy, so I'm not sure how long ago that's been, or anything of that nature. So maybe the people that's, uh, opposing that on that particular item may want to share that with us, or provide some insight, because I haven't heard anything, and I watch the news every day. Um, I've seen, I've actually been in some of the properties that Mr. Phillips have constructed, and there's many of them throughout the John Barrow area. And I can say it is an improvement, it is giving people to get, you know, an opportunity to have affordable housing for families, not just restricted to one or two people. And, um, I think these properties are an improvement. And I, I just don't see any concern of whereas anyone would oppose growth in their own community, Little Rock as a whole. So, that's my say. If there's any questions, you know, you know, regarding what, you know, I've had to say here, I would like to hear them.
Thank you for that. The next, um, card we have in support of the item is Linda Ann White Gary.
My name is Linda Ann White Gary. I live in one of Phillips', uh, apartment. I live on the one on Ludwig. And I've been living there for, going on six years. There have never been no problem there around me. And going up and down John Barrow, I might hear, you know, cars going up and down John Barrow, but it's not much going over in my neighborhood. I feel safe, I feel peaceful. And my son, which is 40 years old, he walk up and down John Barrow late at night. And he's not afraid. And I go to church, and I, sometimes it be late at night. And I, I feel safe getting out of my car, going inside my apartment. I don't feel like I have to rush or run to try to get in my apartment because of crime or something going around me. I just feel safe, and I will stay there until the Lord call me home.
Thank you. Um, may we have the applicant come back to the podium? I think there's some questions the commissioners might have after your closing. Yes, sir? The applicant, you? The applicant, Mr. Phillips?
Okay.
Um, the young lady that spoke last, do you own the property across the street from her house?
No. I know all my neighbors. I, I'm gonna be terribly honest with you. My heart goes out to the point that, and I started out saying, because this ain't my first rodeo, fear. But I didn't make John Barrow. I can't stop all the crime in John Barrow. But what I can do is be a good builder and landlord. It's not in my apartments. We all live in Barrow pretty much, and, uh, uh, I go beyond what the city asked me to do. I have more power than this required. He knows that, Marty knows that. I've been dealing with him 10, 12 years. And, uh, all of my developments are quiet, well-maintained, and I make good neighbors. And hopefully, I'll be able to persuade these people, y'all give me the permit, and I build. And I have turned people from enemies and fear to friends. That's why the John Barrow Association supports me. They tough. Them some old women, they up and down the street, they care about Barrow. We got some been in Barrow 60, 70, they been in Barrow when they was riding horses. The lady over at John Barrow Association, she was there when it was horse trails. She seen it bad, she seen it get better. She supports me. All I can promise is I have, and, uh, some of y'all know me, I've kept my word. I build good, affordable housing, I maintain them, I keep them clean. There's no, uh, activity, there's no running around at nighttime, there's no... Most people...
Mr. Phillips, can you just make, hold on one second. Can you just make sure you address the commission?
Most, most people, most good, working, hard-working people, such as these people, want and deserve peace of mind. I bring that, because I assure them, we're gonna be decent and in order in my apartments. And the reason I had them to come, because they are part of, they own land, they have a vested interest in Barrow. They stay in the apartments. And, uh, you know, I've asked the board before to grant me the permit, and I've kept my word, and, uh, I will continue to keep my word. And we have had no killings in the apartments. I don't, I don't, I, I don't know where they, or what be going on. I, I can't take ownership or responsibility of other people's action. I can only tell you what I'm gonna do, do what I say I'm gonna do, and when I come back before you, I'll be indebted again.
Thank you. Do the commissioners have any questions for the applicant? Seeing none, thank you. I think it'd be time to entertain a motion.
I move for the approval of Item Z 9638, including all staff comments and conditions.
Second.
May we have a roll call vote, please?
Bed?
Yes.
Brooks?
Cheatham?
Yes.
Art?
Yes.
Haynes?
Yes.
Hodge?
Latur?
Yes.
McDonald?
Yes.
Thomas? Vickers?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Passes 902. Motion carries.
Thank you. Um, for everyone who came out, we appreciate you speaking on the issue, whether you're for it and against it, but the motion passes. And we have one more item on the regular agenda, uh, if you'd like to stay around for it. Uh, we're gonna hear about the South End Neighborhood. I think Walter's gonna introduce the item, is that correct?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, my name is Walter Malone, City Staff. Um, I'm gonna introduce and give a little bit of background information for the commission, since you haven't seen any neighborhood plans in a, in a long ti, a long time. I wanted to make, go give a little bit of background information about that also. And then there's some representatives of the neighborhood here who will speak to you about more specifics that are in this particular neighborhood plan. Uh, first off, this is an update to a neighborhood plan for the South End, uh, community. That's the area south of Roosevelt Road, uh, in between the State Fairgrounds and Interstate 30, basically, uh, to give you an orientation. This is the second update for that neighborhood plan. Uh, this was, and it was, the updates and all neighborhood plans are now done at the request of, of the neighborhoods. So this neighborhood asked for... neighborhood asked for this neighborhood plan to be updated. Staff began working with them prior to COVID. That was not me, so I don't have a full encyclopedia of knowledge in that, because the staff person that did that has retired since the, since he started work on this application, so he retired in September, so I'm a fill-in for, for us today. The neighborhood plans are, were designed to be plans by and for the neighborhood, and so when they're presented to the Planning Commission and the Board of Directors, the neighborhood presents them basically to you folks, and you're asked to approve a resolution of support, and what you're, the resolution that you're passing is support of the goals in the, in the plan. So, basically, you are saying in your vote that you agree with the direction, and the city agrees with the direction of the plan, you may not agree with every word that's in the plan, you're not being asked to agree to every word in the plan, and every specific action that might be in the plan, but you're agreeing to the direction of the plan. This way, we make sure it's the neighborhood's plan and not the city's plan for the neighborhood. So, that was an important distinction that we tried to make back when we were, started doing these in the 1990s. The neighborhood plans are basically what are called action or policy plans, so they're trying to give a direction for the future development of the neighborhood, where it should go in the future, and how it can be improved, or how we can build on the strengths of that particular neighborhood. In this, this case, I'm gonna go over the, the basic goals in the neighborhood plan, that's also was printed in the agenda, so you, so you've seen those, and then the neighborhood folks are gonna, after I, I'm gonna step away, and they're gonna go over some more specifics in the plan. The goals in the plan are an infrastructure goal, goal which is to coordinate with the Public Works Department to improve the conditions of the infrastructure within the neighborhood. The housing goal is to improve the housing stock of the neighborhood, both rental and owner-occupied housing. Economic development goal is to encourage economic development within the area. The parks and recreation goal is to promote better and safer park facilities for the community. Crime reduction goal is to improve public safety and decrease crime within the neighborhood. The social services goal is to provide needed social services within the neighborhood for area residents. The existing land use and rental property goal is to improve our neighborhood through zoning controls, and the history goal is to establish and document the full history of the South End. So, with that, I'm gonna step away and turn the podium over to, I believe Ms. Jeffries is gonna be first.
Yes, we have three members of the Steering Committee who are gonna join us, Mrs. Ruby Jeffries.
Thank you, Mr. Malone. To Mr. Malone and other members of the Planning Commission, I am Ruby Jeffries, and I bring you greetings from the South End Neighborhood Association Coalition, representing this evening our members of the Neighborhood Association and Steering Committee of our Neighborhood Action Plan. We have Ms. Joyce Dixon, Ms. Eleanor Stevenson, Dr. Minnie Hatchet, and myself from the South End Neighborhood Group, Mr. Lawrence Keier, Meadowbrook Club Association, and Ms. Jackie Randall, Whitmore Circle Association. This process started as a result of scheduled meetings that were held at our Neighborhood Resource Center at 4:00 PM with city officials on the second Thursday of each month. These meetings were called Safer Neighborhood Initiatives, Issues, and Concerns. We brought our concerns before the city officials and department heads, and we also met with City Manager Bruce Moore on numerous occasions. We did not get the results that we needed to correct the problems, nor make an impact on what we were trying to do within the South End community. We were constantly asked by City Manager Bruce Moore, is this your action plan? Is this in your action plan? If not, we can't act on it. The Coalition finally called a meeting with the Neighborhood Association to start the process of updating our 2004 Neighborhood Action Plan. Mr. Brian Minyard was contacted from Planning and Development to advise and assist us. We developed a plan. The Neighborhood Action Plan would address concerns in the area of, and Mr. Malone has already mentioned it, but I will repeat it, of the history, infrastructure improvement, housing, economic development, parks and recreation, crime, existing land use and rental properties. We added social services to our updated action plan. The Coalition then mailed a letter on April 7, 2018, to all residents of the South End of Little Rock, informing them that the City of Little Rock had requested that we upgrade our 2004 Neighborhood Action Plan, and therefore, we were, we were requesting their presence at a public forum meeting, Monday, April 16, 2018, at 6:00 PM at the Greater Center Star Baptist Church. There were approximately 74 residents in attending, according to a sign-in sheet. Additional forms were completed within the Neighborhood Association meetings. At a given date and time, all forms were collected and the information was compiled. To better understand each topic and area of concentration, Mr. Minyard scheduled meetings far and with us with city department heads and staff, and any specialists that he thought would aid us in trying to accomplish our goals and objectives. We met at our Neighborhood Resource Center. After our meeting, after our meetings were complete, the Coalition and Mr. Minyard did a survey and need assessment of the South End, and we started working our updates. Because of COVID-19 and our city offices being closed, we started meeting virtually by telephone conferences, and Dr. Minnie Hatchet offered the use of the UAPB North Little Rock site for a physical meeting space, and we accepted. In September 2021, our 2021 Revised South End Improvement Plan was, was finally drafted and submitted to Mr. Brian Minyard. We started the project in 2018, we ended the project in 2021. Approximately 30 months, we put in approximately two and a half years of, of work within this action plan. We would like to give special acknowledgements to, thank yous to Mr. Brian Minyard for his invaluable service, his professionalism, the patience, the tolerance, and the commitment working with us to make sure that we completed this Neighborhood Action Plan before he retired. We also would like to give recognition to our late director, Irma Hendricks, who did get a chance to view not the final draft, but the one before the draft that Mr. Minyard gave us, and she was concerned about the type of the book that would be published. Did we want the picture, the pictures that we had in the old book? And then she was concerned about the funding of the book. She was concerned about how the book was gonna get paid for. This is a copy of the 2, 1999, May 1999, and 2004 Action, Neighborhood Action Plan. When we, in, in our process of trying to develop this book here, we discovered one basic general thing, that the information that was in this book was basically the same information that we put in this book. Very little had been done from 1999 to when we started working in 2018. I would also like to give thanks to Mrs. Eleanor Stevenson, who edited most of our work that we had to submit to Mr., to Mr. Minyard. And Mr. Malone, we appreciate you for stepping in after Mr. Minyard's retirement. We do appreciate you on behalf of the South End Neighborhood Association Coalition. Next, we will have, who's up to speak next? Mrs. Stevenson?
Any commissioners have any questions for Mrs. Jeffries?
I'm sorry.
I know, you're fine.
Are there any questions?
It was a great presentation, yes. Eleanor Stevenson.
Thank you very kindly.
You're very welcome.
I'm Eleanor Stevenson, and I am a member of the South End Neighborhood Group, as well as the South End Neighborhood Association Coalition. I will be going through and highlighting our goals and objectives. If you have a copy of the PDF of our action plan, I would refer to some pages that I want you to review with me. The first goal is housing tenure. Due to the lack of historic preservation and other factors, the South End area continues to lose housing stock. They have, this has occurred over a period of time, especially since the tornado of 1999. They continued to demolish or have demolition to units through 2020, and if you refer to the pages four and 69, page four will give you copies of the graphs, and it's going to show you the decline in housing, and it will show you the increase in vacancy in the South, South End Neighborhood. It would also give you a comparison of the housing stock, the increase and the decrease compared to the citywide housing. The objective for us to rectify this, we will work with the City of Little Rock and other historic preservation organizations for assistance, and to find available funding at the city and state level, to become proactive in the preservation of historic units. Work with the housing and neighborhood programs to establish historic significance of a unit before demolition process is started, instead of after a proposed demolition is already in progress. We would like to reconstruct those houses that have historic value. This will have, this will help save the historic significance of the South End community. Establish a comprehensive housing program to repair, renovate, and increase maintenance on housing stock of homeowners that are disabled, senior citizens, and low-income families. We wanna work with the City of Little Rock Department to enforce housing codes and ordinance violations. That's the summary of, of housing tenure. Our second goal is infrastructure, and if you refer to page 11, 14, 15, and 16, I will slightly summarize that. Flooding is the number-one priority and continue to be a problem throughout the South End Neighborhood. As a result, Whitmore Circle infrastructure was completely repaired. Our main thing is the flooding, and some of the other areas of flooding is West 33rd Street and also Interstate Park. If you look at page 11, you will see the reconstruction of the Arch Street Bridge, how it has eliminated a lot of the flooding in that area. Interstate Park is still have a flooding problem, but if we implement a lot of the things that I'm gonna go over, that will resolve that. Some of the objectives, we would like for our area, most of the South End area, to resemble the Whitmore Circle area, the improvements of that. They put in sidewalks, curves, newly paved streets, the drainage problem was solved, and the project was completed in 2019, resulting in a clean and inviting area to look at. If you look at page 14, 15, and 16, you will see the before and after pictures of Whitmore Circle, which is very impressive. The next one would be work with the City of Little Rock, Public Works Department, to identify and eliminate other areas of flooding in the community. Another would be repair and clean all ditches, ravines, and drainage systems that flood throughout the South End community. Identify and make sidewalks safe for pedestrians by repairing sidewalks in disrepair, and install sidewalks and curves and gutters when there are none, where there are none. Another factor in infrastructure is lighting in the South End. We would like the lighting to be much better. The lighting threatens the safety of the residents in the South End community. It, it have, it inhabits criminal activities, accidents, unsafe walking areas for pedestrians at night, especially individuals coming from work, school, community activities, or events. A complete, we would like to have a complete analysis done by the City of Little Rock and Entergy to correct and improve the lighting system throughout the South End area. We would like also to have the city to, or the Entergy to provide LED lights, which will deter a lot of blind areas and deter crime also, and it would make the area much more efficient. That is the infrastructure summary. Now, we go to our third goal, and that's parks and recreation. If you turn to page 22, our first thing is to, we would like to continue to implement, to implement Crump's Park Master Plan that was allocated by the one-half-cent tax bill. We would like that to be completed, and as you probably already know, our Thrasher Boys and Girls Clubs have remained closed even after the COVID, and we are very concerned about that because it has contributed to a lot of kids not having anything to do. This in within itself creates a haven in the community for criminal activity. A community center provides a safe environment for youth to engage in programs and instructed, and instructed activities, and although South End is home to three other parks, or three city parks, a great park system is only as great as its activity and the safety, and the safety it provides its residents. The entire community suffers from the closing of an indoor community facility, as well as limited outdoor activities because of the safety concerns. If you look on page 12, you will see the picture of the splash- you will see the picture of the splash pad that was constructed for the South End, and that helped out tremendously this summer for the children. It gave them somewhere to go without having to cross Roosevelt to go to other facilities for any water entertainment. We would like to provide a new facility for neighborhood programs to teach job skills, computer classes, health classes, programs for senior citizens, youth, young adults, and children. We would like to work with the City of Little Rock Police Department and the Parks and Recreation Department to establish a park patrol security force. This would not only benefit South End parks, but it would also benefit the City of Little Rock 65-plus park system. This, establishing this park patrol security force would only, would, let me see, establishing a park patrol security force whose only job is to patrol city parks will reduce crime with the Little Rock Park System, freeing up the Little Rock Police Department and give residents a secure sense of safety. This could operate similarly to the Little Rock School District Security Patrol. Their only job is to make sure all of the city parks are safe and free from unwanted activities. Going to goal four would be economic development. You can go to page 20 to look at those goals also. But to summarize that, the South End community was once home of over 30 businesses. We even had a Kroger store on 28th and Orange, as well as restaurants, as well as a variety store that was in comparison to a Kmart. We had barber shops. We had car, car repair shops. We had a lot of things. We didn't have to go across Roosevelt in order to get services that we needed within the community. We could walk to these places. So one of our objectives, some of our objectives, will be to improve the overall appearance of the neighborhood through proper building and ground maintenance. Enforce municipal codes upon existing businesses to take ownership and make needed repairs to both the inside and outside and the overall perimeter of their properties. This will lead to beautification of the neighborhood through community and individual efforts. This will ultimately aid in attracting new businesses and improve job opportunities in the South End community, as well as initiate or give calls to explore job training programs for local residents. This will also contribute to our social services needs, which is goal number five. And if you look at page 26 and refer to, look at page 26, and you will see that our goal is to, our objective is to encourage economic development of the community by providing community services. And if you look at all of the bullets up under social services, those are the needs that we feel that would enhance the needs of our community and our residents. It would attract new businesses to the South End community, and it would also develop, if we develop a health and wellness clinic that will serve, that would be serviced as a location for developing life skills. With all of this said, we feel like we can redevelop the South End community if we improve or if we implement the goals and objectives that was previously mentioned. Thank you. Are there any questions?
I don't think so. Thank you very much. We have one more speaker from the South End, Jackie Randall.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, or good evening. My name is Jackie Randall. I am the president of the Whitmore Circle Association. I'm here this evening to talk about and highlight the history of the South Side Park, the home of Coach Ed Johnson and the Sunset Tigers. The park was opened in 1970 by the city and was to be maintained in accordance to all other city parks. In 1990, a ice storm and a tornado came through and did severe damage to the park and our neighborhood. However, the city replaced the restroom and rebuilt the basketball court. And the field was restored by Coach Johnson, the players, and volunteers. Since 1990, very little has been done to upgrade South Side Park. I am here to reemphasize the plan that we put in place that will refer, if you would refer to Parks and Rec, page 22. It outlines some things that covers South Side Park in its entirety. These are some things that we need done to bring our park up to standard. The other thing I'm here for is to introduce you to Coach Ed Johnson and the Sunset Tigers and the, and the, hmm, the achievements that they have had over the past 50 years. 50 years ago, Coach Ed Johnson was asked to coach and organize a little league team. He has been doing that for 50 years. He has been head coach for 50 years. In this park, we have seen over 3,000 youth come through. Many of these young people have gone on to college, graduated, working their degree and in a profession. We have also had a group of young people that went on to play football. We have about 30-plus NFL players, NFL players, and also those that have tried out for the NFL. And they are listed in the book as well. So this is to say that we are a park and a place where we see people for who they are. Contributions are being made. Our focus is on the young people. Coach Johnson said that his goal was with football was a way to teach young people lessons in life. The other one was to commitment. The other one to pursue your, pursue your dreams. The other one is to be able to be productive citizens. If you would notice that in this book, we have a lot of players, and they have been truly, truly valuable to our area. They have come, they have contributed, they have gone off and become teachers, ministers, businessmen. So this program in itself has done a lot. And we feel that it deserves some looking at in our history section. Coach Johnson is an example of what is missing in the South End. So many people in so many places have gone unnoticed because they fail to understand the history of their contributions. We put in place in this plan what is called the history goals. The history goals is to identify people and places that have contributed to the South End. Like she said, we need something to attract people to the South End. It's not just some people, but a community is made up of people. People that are productive, people that made their way, people that have paved the way for others. And we feel that the history goal will identify these people and also identify places that needs to be looked at before they go to demolition. When they looked at the housing stock, a lot of houses were destroyed before anyone found out the significance of their value in history. We need to pay attention. Coach Johnson has set an example for others like the Little Rock Negro League, who was created in 1932 by Dubison, called the Dubison Tigers. And their home was in Crump Park. That's history for the South End. We need to start looking at what we're doing and the things that we're doing before we get to demolition. We put on the cover a list of people and places that need to be looked at. We need to look at them because they are the makers and the shakers of the South End. Some of these people have made waves. Some of these people have done so many different things that even we don't know. But we are asking the city and the board to take a look at the historic status of the South End. And that, too, will bring attraction to this area, businesses to this area. We also have in there a list of, not only the people and the places, but we also have a point in there where we want to create a pioneer wall. We need to show that we have a living, breathing, viable community, and it can be productive. It has been in the past, and it can come back. But we need to get something to attract people to the South End. And showing the historic status and their achievements will help people to see that we are citizens that have been forgotten. We want to be revitalized, and this is one way that we can do that. So we're asking the city to work with historic preservations, the archives, to identify, and let's get these people out and let them be known. We have an area in our, in our city that so many people visit. It's called the Emerse Springs. And you all know down on High Street, they call it the springs, the hot springs. That spring is visited every day, and people are interested. So if we could put up a wall showcasing the talents, the people, that would give them something to think about, about living in the South End. So this is my presentation for today. But I thank you for listening, and I pray that this plan we have put together will go forth, and we can work together to revitalize Little Rock. It's going to take all of us, and it's going to take every division to do it. But we cannot let one area fall back and everyone else keep going. We got to work together to pull us together. Do y'all have any questions?
Wise words. Any questions? Thank you so much for y'all's time, energy, and effort putting this plan together. I think we as a commission-
Sorry. I'm sorry. Oh, Lord.
You're fine.
Coach Johnson, would you please stand? This is my hero. He's a man that has served 50 years teaching and mentoring young people in our area. He came home from Vietnam, and that was his job, to take his life and mentor young people for a better life. Coach Ed Johnson, we want to thank you.
I think with that said, the Planning Commission should entertain a motion for resolution, to approve Resolution 151, Resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Little Rock, Arkansas, in support of the goals and objectives of the South End Improvement Plan Revision.
I am proud personally to present this motion because I passed in that neighborhood, and I grew up in that neighborhood, and I've been there for 104 years. So I have a lot of stake in the South End. So I want to make a motion that the Planning Commission of the City of Little Rock supports revision in the goals as expressed in the South End Improvement Plan Revision. This is Resolution 151.
One second. May we have a roll call vote, please?
Hey, Robbie. Before we do that, let me, let me just make one comment. I really applaud you ladies for that presentation. I've been to a lot of Planning Commission meetings, and I've never come to one and been inspired before. But that was awesome. So I don't know much about that community, but based on your presentation, I played a little ball at Interstate Park. It's probably about all I know about the South community. But I'm going to do a little research. I had no idea there was a spring down there. I would never want to be on the other side of an issue that you ladies were supporting. I know that. But I just, you know, at some point, maybe after retirement, I hope I have as much pride in my community as you folks have in yours. That was awesome and super inspiring. So with that, you can do the roll call vote.
And just to piggyback off Commissioner Hart and Commissioner Benton, ladies, y'all did a fantastic job. Coach, we definitely appreciate you. We know that community is definitely can be underserved. But like I think the young ladies eloquently put it, it's going to take all of us to make a change for the City of Little Rock. So I definitely taking my hat off to you ladies.
Amen.
Thank you.
Ready for the roll call? I think we are. I think we know the results, but yeah, go ahead. Benton.
Yes.
Brooks. Cheatham.
Yes.
Hart.
Yes.
Haynes.
Yes.
Hodge.
Yes.
Lature.
Yes.
McDonald.
Yes.
Thomas. Vickers.
Yes.
Vogel.
Yes.
The South End Proposal carries 902. Thank you very much. We appreciate y'all's patience and all the work that was done for your plan. I think now it might be time for any public comments or any business that's old. Okay. With that said, I just want to make a few statements. I asked Monty to look at our attendance record for the last year, and it was very, very good. We had very few absences last year. So thank you all for taking the time, energy, and effort to make it to the meetings or on WebEx if you couldn't. I think Walter, in the next meeting, if not today, will seek some volunteers to be on a committee. Sure, please. If you could explain it a little bit more, I think that'd be helpful.
Partially for the benefit of the new commissioners, there is a subcommittee, the Planning Commission, which is, which is a plans committee. And we, staff works with that group on issues, not always as extensive as the presentations you just got there, but typically on land use plan issues and things like that. And so there's, we've been meeting via WebEx for the last six, eight months. There were three, I think, commissioners that- There were three, I think, commissioners that had said they wanted to be on that committee. So basically, I think we kind of need to reconstitute that committee. We've, our attendance has only been one or two at most of the meetings, and so we probably need to try to get a few more commissioners. We have been meeting, like I said, via WebEx during the lunch hour on Tuesdays once a month. If that's not a good time, if, once we figure out who all want, who all was interested in being on this committee, we can figure out a different time if, if the time is, is an issue. But we try to keep it one to two hours. So far, we've only been meeting once a month, but again, that, those are not hard rules. It could be, it could be others by consensus of the group.
Thank you for that information.
Basically, it's a call for volunteers.
Yes. I think some people might be appointed, correct, if we can't get all the volunteers we need. But if that interests you, it's another way to learn. Want to ask Monty one thing about next meeting's agenda. Jess Griffin asked that their items that were deferred from our previous meeting be put in priority since there was not enough folks for them to have their, you know, say. And if some other items don't get deferred, just be prepared mentally for the next meeting. It's not going to be as quick as this one. So anyway, with that said, I will adjourn.
Also, also at your next meeting, which is January 13th, you guys will hold another election for chair and vice chair for the year 2022.
I'd be honored to help in any way possible, just if y'all would like me to. And Dr. Benton, if you would like to do it as well, we'd be happy to help.
And I'm new, but I'd also be happy to help.
Well, with that said, the meeting's adjourned. Thank y'all.